Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mr. Tom Kendall, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please look after this group tonight as we discuss and look at things that are best for our community and be with our community as we are now in the cold time of the year again and we're expecting some inches of snow today and tonight and tomorrow. Be with our people who are responsible for cleaning our streets and that they may do that with no hazards and no traffic accidents. Be with our first responders, our fire and our police. Make sure they stay safe on their duties that they perform for the city. And dear Heavenly Father, please be with those who can't be with their families this time of year, who are overseas fighting for our freedoms, that we may enjoy the benefits of that that we enjoy on a day-to-day basis. In His name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver.
Present.
Mr. Twilliger.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Here.
Mr. Lutz.
Here.
Mrs. Oda.
Here.
Mr. Kendall.
Here.
Mr. Schwizer.
Here.
Mr. Heath.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
I'll move to excuse Mr. Phillips.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips is excused.
Mrs. Knight, please read the minutes of the January 16th Meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, January 16, 2018. Committee reports, Mrs. Baker reported regarding the January 8, 2018 workshop with it noted that the rules of council would be amended. The rules of council were amended by unanimous vote. Resolution and memoriam to William Harrison Hobart Jr. was approved by council. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:34 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Now we have a motion to accept.
A motion.
Certainly.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
They're approved.
We have two committee reports this evening from the Finance Committee. Mr. Schwizer, would you please read those reports?
Yes, ma'am. On January 22nd, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the application of Smith's Boathouse Restaurant, LLC, be approved. The details regarding the improvements to be made from the loan proceeds and the terms are discussed in the detailed report. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving this application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development revolving loan program and recommends that legislation be prepared approving the loan application of Smith's Boathouse Restaurant, LLC, for $126,873 from the Small Business Development revolving loan fund. Committee further supports emergency legislation so that the loan can be processed and the improvement started. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Seaver, Mr. Schwizer, and Tom Kendall as the committee chair.
Are there any questions from council? You may continue.
Yes, ma'am. On January 22nd, this committee met to review the request that some excess public property be declared surplus and offered for sale. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared declaring the below listing as surplus items no longer needed for a public purpose and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for the sale of the items listed. And again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Seaver, Mr. Schwizer, and Tom Kendall as committee chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Schwizer.
You're welcome.
Our next report comes from the Safety and Health Committee and Chairperson Robin Oda.
Thank you, Madam President. This committee met on January 22nd to consider proposed amendments to the curfew provisions for minors. We note that the current provisions have not been updated since 1979 and do not necessarily reflect current practices and activities in which minors may routinely be involved, nor do they reflect the current Ohio Motor Vehicle laws. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend Chapter 509 of the Codified Ordinances related to curfew for minors as outlined in the detailed report with provisions that would reflect the current Ohio Motor Vehicle laws and be more reflective of current practices and activities of minors. Respectfully submitted, Brock Heath, John Twilliger, and myself as chair.
Are there any questions from council on the report? Thank you, Mrs. Oda. The Streets and Sidewalks Committee has a report in the absence of Mr. Phillips, the chairperson. Mr. Lutz, will you provide that report, please?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on January 16th to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission. The council should accept the dedication by Catering Health Network of 0.294 acres of right-of-way along West Water Street at both North Elm Street and North Adams Street. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared accepting the dedication of 0.294 acres of right-of-way along West Water Street as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission.
And that is submitted by?
Submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and Mr. Phillips, Chairman.
Any questions on that report? Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Utilities Committee has the next two reports and Chairman, Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Madam President. On January 22nd, this committee met to consider proposed amendments to the pre-treatment program sewer use ordinance and to provide updates to include specific language as required by the Ohio EPA. The amendments are set forth and explained in this document. It is our recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared amending the sanitary sewer pre-treatment ordinance sections 915.01F and 915.05L1, 951.07N, and 915.14 as outlined in the attachment to meet the requirements of the EPA. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Lutz, Mr. Twist, and myself, John Twilliger, as chairman.
Are there any questions or comments from council? You may continue.
Thank you, Madam President. On January 30th, committee members, Mr. Lutz and Twilliger, met to consider a professional service agreement with Arcadis U.S. Inc. related to the design and other services for the UV system replacement at the wastewater treatment plant. This is in an amount not to exceed $128,700. The project will replace the UV disinfection systems that were installed in 1997. The detailed report includes project scope and timing information. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into a professional service agreement with Arcadis U.S. Inc. to perform design services, bidding assistance, and construction oversights for the UV system replacement at the wastewater treatment plant in an amount not to exceed This is based on the explanation of the timing of when this project can be performed. Committee supports emergency legislation on this. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Lutz, Mr. Twist, and myself, Mr. Twilliger, as chairman.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. I have one report this evening regarding the January 29th workshop reference to West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project. Seven members of council and the President of Council participated in the January 29th, 2018 workshop regarding the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project. Also attending were the mayor, city auditor, Director of Public Service and Safety, the clerk of council, members of city staff and citizens. The purpose of the workshop was to provide council with general information regarding the project and the scope. The project is not yet designed, so some of the questions could not be addressed. As the project progresses, there will be other discussions with council and other requests for authorizations. Also, as the project progresses, the city staff will be meeting privately with property owners. Council's next steps in the process would be authorizing an agreement for the project design and applying for safety grants following recommendations of staff. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Heath, Mrs. Oda, Mr. Seaver, Mr. Lutz, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Twilliger, Mr. Kendall, Mr. Schwizer, and Mr. Twist. Any questions from council on that? At this time then, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our Seeing none then, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R3, 2018.
Resolution number R3, 2018. Resolution approving the application of Smith's Boathouse Restaurant, LLC, for assistance from the Small Business Development revolving loan fund and declaring an emergency. This was recommended by the Loan Review Committee, loan amount $126,875. First reading.
Is there any discussion from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R4, 2018.
Resolution number R4, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Arcadis U.S. Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, to provide the design services for the UV system replacement at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. The cost of this agreement will not exceed $128,700. First reading.
Is there any discussion from council?
Move to suspend.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read Ordinance 05, 2018.
Ordinance number 05, 2018. Ordinance accepting the dedication of a right-of-way. This is along West Water Street at North Elm and North Adams Street, has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. First reading.
Any questions or discussion from council?
I'll move to suspend the rules on that.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Seaver to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 07, 2018.
Ordinance number 06.
Oh, 06, I'm sorry, yes, 06.
Ordinance amending Chapter 915 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, use of public sewers, specifically Sections 915.05F, 915.05L1, 915.07N, and 915.14. This is wording changes that have been, was requested by Ohio EPA. This is the first reading.
Are there any comments from council?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Seaver to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 07, 2018.
Ordinance number 07, 2018. Ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property is no longer needed for municipal purposes and authorizing the sale of such excess property. This will authorize the sale of a few vehicles and pieces of equipment. First reading.
Any comments or questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 08, 2018.
Ordinance number 08, 2018. An ordinance repealing existing Section 50908 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, and establishing new Section 905.08 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio regarding curfew of minors. First reading.
Are there any questions or discussion from council?
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Seaver and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 09, 2018.
Ordinance number 09, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of 8.015 acres, part of Enlot 9891, in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of AR Agricultural Residential to R3B Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, is an acre north of Finsbury Lane, and there will be a public hearing at the next council meeting. First reading.
Are there any questions from council at this point in time? This will go to a second reading. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance 10, 2018.
Ordinance number 10, 2018. Ordinance amending Section 1141.01F of the zoning code of the City of Troy, Ohio, and enacting Section 1143.25 of the zoning code of the City of Troy, Ohio. This will establish a new downtown riverfront overlay district, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, has a public hearing at the next council meeting. First reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council at this time?
Madam President, I wish to present a proposed amendment. Whereas there is currently before the City Council pending legislation to establish a designated overlay district for the riverfront development, whereas I wish to propose to council an amendment or modification of the legislation to assure the wishes of the public can be heard through mandatory public hearings and elected representatives can provide oversight to the developments in the overlay district. Therefore, I hereby move that legislation be modified in three substantive areas. One, the boundary lines be expanded in the northwest corner to include all areas north of Main Street, east of the existing rail line near Madison Street, and south of the corporate limits, and expanded in the southeast to include all areas south of East Canal Street and east of Moorhead Street. Two, that the process for review of an applicant within the overlay district be split between parcels larger than half acre and/or containing all or part of five buildings and those smaller than the stated criteria. An application meeting the above criteria involving those parcels larger than half acre and/or containing all or part of five buildings shall be reviewed by the Planning Commission and upon recommendation immediately be presented to council. Council shall have a first reading at its first scheduled meeting after presentation, followed immediately by a mandatory public hearing. The proposal shall proceed to a second reading at the next scheduled council meeting, and council shall dispose of the recommendation through a majority vote. When the parcel does not, or three, when the parcel does not meet the above criteria that requires mandatory city council action, the Planning Commission shall approve the said request via the following process. The Planning Commission shall have two mandatory meetings with the readings of the proposed plan. The second meeting shall include a mandatory public hearing. The decision of the Planning Commission shall be forwarded to city council and be subject to a waiting period of five business days. If city council takes no action within five business days of the decision of the Planning Commission, the decision of the Planning Commission shall become final. If city council elects to reconsider the decision of the Planning Commission, the matter shall be placed on the agenda at the next council meeting. The decision of the Planning Commission shall become final unless three-quarters of the members of city council vote to overturn the decision within 90 days. As a result of this amendment, Section 1143.25G1E, as set forth in Section 2 relating to appeals to the Board of Zoning Appeals of the ordinance, shall be deleted in its entirety. Wherefore, it is hereby requested that this motion be seconded, voted on, and assuming passage, proceed to a second reading. Respectfully submitted, Todd Seaver.
I'll second that, Madam President.
It's been moved by Mr. Seaver and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to amend the zoning, to amend the ordinance to include all of what Mr. Seaver said. I will not read that, through that whole thing again, but is, so we have a motion in a second. Mrs. Knight, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Lutz.
Yes.
Mrs. Oda.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Mr. Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mr. Kendall.
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer.
Yes.
Just thank you to Grant Kerber and Tim Davis. They participated with our Mayor's Youth Council at a Super Bowl party yesterday, and it was a wonderful opportunity to have the young people interact with each other. The next scheduled event that the Mayor's Youth Council participate in will be their strategic plan of what's good about Troy and what can be improved. And I will pass on their comments as fifth and sixth graders to all of you once that takes place, February 21, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two brief comments. First of all, related to the Boathouse revolving loan fund application, we will submit that quickly to keep that going. We do anticipate that we may ask for some additional legislation change related to the CIC arrangement as the, as it relates to our lease with them and their lease with the Boathouse. We're working out the details on that, but that may need to come to council, and we will, at that point, ask for a council committee assignment. The second one is that on February 19 is the President's Day. We are closed. However, recycling and refuse pickup will remain on the normal schedule. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Madam President, I'll just tell you to add to the mayor's comments that fifth and sixth graders are excited by the Super Bowl, but also the possibility of school closing or, they were that, seeing the snow out there. They really enjoyed that. That's all I have.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggi.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council members this evening?
Madam President, I'd just like to thank Grant Kerber. Even though I deal with legislation on a daily basis, I've not written it, and Grant was helpful in trying to make sure that I worded this appropriately, and thanks council for their input and support.
Anyone else on council have any comments? Any comments from city staff this evening? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience?
Buster Connor, 1210 South Cleveland Street, Troy, Ohio. I noticed on Dorset, we've got the bicycle indicators on the road. My question is, why are they there? It's a, it's a shared road. Why did we have to put them down? And what cost did it cost the citizens in taxes to have that put down? And then at schools, I noticed we've changed from painting to putting rubber indicators or signed school on the ground. What's a lifelong living of those versus painting?
Mr. Titterington.
Okay, so there are two, two questions that you had. The, the bike lane is a shared road that is to comply with our Complete Streets policy to raise awareness. It is a shared lane, meaning it's a driving lane, but also it's to give awareness that this is a thoroughfare that's part of the Complete Streets policy, and so asking drivers to just be aware of others around them. As far as any additional costs, you know, we had the stencil. It's a little additional paint. I believe in that case, it was part of the paving contract, so there was no additional cost. It was part of the traffic marking. But we do have the stencil. We have the staff, and it's, it's just white paint, so it's, it's not really any additional cost. The other is related to the heat tape, if you will, and there's a more technical term that Jill knows, related to school markings. That does have a longer, longer shelf life. I believe it's also reflective to meet the new federal guidelines, and so, once we apply it, it should last several years longer than having to repaint it every year or two.
And then I also noticed out there on Westbrook, they cut all the trees down on one side. Are they contemplating cutting them down on the other side also?
I'm not sure. That's probably, that's probably the park department. Not sure about what they did and why. We can follow up and.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice because those sycamore trees, really, a lot of limbs and bark and everything else falls on the road, and I think it's a lot better looking and better for driving in those conditions without limbs falling on your cars and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Rosell, 637 Clarinon Road. I just want to give you some positive feedback. Appreciate it, Patrick, and council in general, and Mr. Mullins, on the quick thing service[1767.82]